You are live.
Good evening. Let's stand and say the pledge in a moment of silence, please.
The pledge is to defy the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please.
Commissioner Craven.
Here.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Present.
Commissioner Rexel.
Present.
Chair Russell.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Present.
Commissioner Aguirre.
Here.
Commissioner Launer.
Present.
Thank you. We now are have some minutes to approve. Commissioner Launer.
I would recommend approval of minutes of regular session Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, executive session Tuesday, January tenth, twenty twenty-three, closed session Wednesday, November ninth, twenty twenty-two, closed session Wednesday, November ninth, twenty twenty-two, second session, and a closed session of Tuesday, January tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Support. Any discussion? All those who support the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, seven zero. Thank you.
Hi. Somebody's car, black Volvo, wrote on its park, it's out there, got a Michigan plate, starts with three O P, I think. Volvo, black Volvo.
Thank you, Mr. Natt.
Black Volvo.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, we need to approve the agenda and late additions. We have, we'd like to take the collective bargaining update off the agenda. We will have that at our next meeting. We would like to add the late addition request on the copier replacement building safety that was forward to us earlier this week.
Would that be number eighteen? Then?
That would be number eighteen. Any, any other additions or deletions? Did I hear a motion? Commissioner Alman.
I'm with the Leilinaw County Board of Commissioners, approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All those who support the motions, say aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. Motion approved, you know. At this point, we welcome our audience and we do have a section for public comments. I would like to read a statement prior to public comment if I could. We appreciate the public's interest in our meeting and we welcome comments on all county issues. Comments should be directed to the Board of Commissioners. Matters brought forth that require a response will be addressed by the county administrator or the board chair following the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes during the first public comment at the start of the meeting and five minutes at the final public comments period. The board requests that persons making public comments identify themselves at the start of their comments, send no personal names, insults, and abusive or profane language be used. Thank you. Do we have any public comments this evening? Yes, Bill.
The Wiesner Homewood Township. And again, I'd like to say, and I've been using since March, is we demand honest elections in our Leland County by replacing Dominion voting machines with secure paper ballots. All we're asking for is honest elections. There's only one way to get them. It's either one person, one ballot, one vote, one day. If you look all over the country, you'll see they're not getting honest elections. Seventy percent of the people interviewed, seven hundred and fifty in a Rasmussen poll for the twenty twenty-two election in Arizona, think there was fraud going on. Seventy percent of all the people. This handout is a great opportunity. It's only a small part of what's available. So it's twenty twenty-two, twelve seventeen, that's when they finalized it, Return to Hand Counting Missouri Elections. And she's got an e-manual, it's two hundred and fifty-five pages long, how you could do secure voting with paper ballots. And I'm going to have a link to it on our tcfamily.org website. I'm going to send it out to the two hundred and sixty-some county workers and the three hundred and thirty-some from the eighth schools, the teachers, administrators, et cetera, and just let them know. And he, these guys give great examples. There's, there's the paper showing how to do the hand counting, and then there's a three-hour webinar. And the three-hour webinar for the people speaking, Sean Phillips, Colonel, he knows security. Mike Lindell, you may think he's a pillow guy, well, he is. He's a good salesman that way, but he spent forty million dollars. He wouldn't spend forty million dollars if there wasn't good reason. He's right in the middle of it to show the fraud. And then on the back page, Douglas G. Frank, he's shown the fraud in Charlevoix, where the susceptibility of fraud in Charlevoix, Emmett and Grand Travers County, I would think were similar to those. Likelihood is point nine nine seven from the phantom voters, et cetera. And then Dr. David Clemens and his wife Erin, they share in this webinar. So I have that all together. I hope you'll consider it when I send it out. And again, all we're asking for is honest elections in our Leland County. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Renee Wyler, and I live in Lake Lelandal, and I'm an S C C whistleblower. I'm also a friend of the D O J, an I R S whistleblower. And what I would like to do tonight is just lay the groundwork for Resolution six oh two one. I'm a member of the National Committee of Whistleblowers. And what we put together is a way to get affordable housing funded and clean up our land records. What we have found is that I personally audited the office, the Register of Deeds, and we have David Trot, David Trot's law firm, Linda Orlands, and Randall Miller have recorded unknown numbers of fraudulent loan documents. I am a mortgage broker. I did originate loans in Ohio and Michigan. I do have several forgeries, at least three in Lelandal County, that I have to address. And what we found out is that in Bailey versus Antrim County, four of us whistleblowers entered into this case. And what we had was my audit on Dr. Mary Dressler in Hawaii that showed how MERS or Mortgage Electronic Registration System used her recorded mortgage with its mortgage identification number and created two other mortgages and registered on her neighbor's properties. I also entered into Bailey, and this was all censored. The audit I did on Judge Henry Nagamoto in Hawaii, where he had twelve active mortgages on his home. And we believe that this is the way some judges are money laundering. And we had the evidence in Bailey, but we were censored. So now, since the media in America will not pick up on this, the Chinese media has, they have my audits from Bailey, and they are reporting on that in China, for God's sakes. So what we need to do now is to look at our land records and we are, I'm working with Sheriff Dar Leaf in Barry County. And what we are finding is there is a nexus between the voter registration system and the mortgage registration system. They are interfacing, taking our data, and I have evidence of that, on a mortgage that I did here in Lelandal County, where they're double funding the mortgage. One, it was my mortgage, it was original, I was the original lender while the mortgage
Your time is expired.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Whitman.
Hi, I want to congratulate Deborah Allen on your position and welcome you to the county and also the new members of the board as well. You've heard me speak before on election integrity, and I can only share firsthand experience working with our elections. And those of you who followed me before, I regaled you about my experience in my hometownship. I live in Northport. And my name is Alexis Whitman, I don't know if I said that, but we had the nightmare of Dominion machine which jammed fourteen different times, recount, required multiple recounts to keep things going, and actually had multiple phone calls to the election department at the state level where they would tell us to unplug it and reboot it and start again. So it was kind of an election from hell in my mind. This past election, I was able to work in a different county, and it was helpful because that county ran much more efficiently and had less difficulty with their machines. And I will say that in many cases, the jamming could occur because procedures weren't being followed precisely as they had been trained. And, you know, if you have a stack of ten ballots, you put them through carefully, cautiously, and they tend to read better than the ones that are sent through while you're doing other things. I will say, though, in our, our group that's monitoring elections locally, a comment came up that one of the, one of the people working that election as a challenger observed that the, at the end of the election, the clerk, because they did not have Wi-Fi at the office, had to take it to her personal home to upload the data to the county. Well, if you follow any election security, you know, that is not an adequate chain of security for an election result, to go to someone's personal home with a thumb drive and then upload, when in reality, we all live about twenty minutes from here, where you, I would ask that in the future, election results be driven to the county, and that one small step would allay some of our, our worries. So I'll leave that with you. I'm conscious of what Renee's been doing on mortgages and the interface between the two databases, and you know that data can be manipulated. So it happens at the micro level and it happens at the macro level, and we are working on that. Today, I had a chance to go through the voter lists and the actual voters, and I, in the space of twenty minutes, I found someone who was not on the voter list who may have voted. So we are going through some of these checks and balances as we can as citizens. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience that would like to make public comment? Thank you very much, and thank you for coming for this meeting. Any commissioner comments? Okay, we now are at our pot in our agenda that I assume many of you came for, and that is our update on the Point Broadband project update. And Patricia Sotis-Neal, who's been working on this for years and years and years, could you come forward and introduce this report and update?
Well, actually, I think online, we're going to have the introduction formally with our project broadband manager, if they're there. But I will say while we're waiting, thank you so much for this opportunity. As we all know, it's been a long time, and I think the progress that's been made has been phenomenal. So with that, let me turn to Chris and let him kick things off. What we are going to do tonight is talk with you a little bit about where we've been, then present where we are, and then I'll end up with a little bit of information on how we're going to hopefully keep everybody informed.
I wonder if we could turn that screen just a little bit for the audience and still see it at the table here. Melinda, we'll turn it and you tell us when we got to stop, okay?
I'll take care of it. You got it, Melinda?
I'm going to give it a try. She's going to want her time to play a little bit.
No, yeah.
She won't be able to see. We have to see.
You have to see.
I think I can see, okay? Yeah, and I've got it down there. Okay.
Thank you very much. Move over a little bit. Okay, thanks, Patricia.
Thank you.
That actually gives us a better view of the audience, too. Never been able to see them from here before. I thank you for having us. Chris here, I'm the project manager for the Lelandal County Rural Broadband Project. I had planned on being there in person for this. A lot of circumstances prevented that this time, but I do hope to get up there soon. I wanted to welcome the four new commissioners. I look forward to meeting you and, of course, our new administrator, who I have had a chance to talk with briefly. But I want to get right into this. Most of this is about where we're at with Point Broadband. Before we get to them, I just wanted to give a, a little timeline as to how we got to this point. And twenty fourteen, it started with the Lelandal Peninsula Economic Foundation, the L P E F, when they were looking at different issues that affected the county. And one of the things that they came up with is the lack of rural broadband was, was a real issue that they needed to look into, which in twenty sixteen led to the Lelandal Internet Futures Team, or LIFT, and that's who you've got today working on this. Their work entailed a few different types of studies and some other work. And in twenty twenty-one, they engaged my firm to go in and do a physical mapping project to really find out where the unserved areas were. We were dealing with a lot of different information from the F C C and others, and we knew that there was a real accuracy issue. At one point, the F C C was reporting that Lelandal County was ninety-eight percent serviceable, meaning ninety-eight percent of the community had access to high-speed reliable internet. And I'm sure a lot of people in this room today realize how wrong that was. I, in twenty twenty-one, we did get a little relief with the F C C. They awarded a bunch of funding through a program called the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, or ARDOF. And I just wanted to show you real quick the results of the, the study itself. This shows, and this is kind of a recap for the new commissioners, I know a lot of people have seen this already, but in twenty twenty-one, this is what we found during our physical survey. This represents all of the serviced areas. The blue indicates Charter, the red up around Gil's Pier indicates Cherry Capital Communications, and in one eighty-six networks also has fiber optic networking up in the Christmas Cove area. It's a little bit hard to see, but it's purple up on that coast. If you're familiar with the area, you know where that's at. And I also mentioned the ARDOF funding, which came along about the time we were doing the study. Took them about a year to, from award to getting everything secured with the different vendors, and that added what you see now on the map. The lighter blue color was areas that was awarded to Charter Communications, and the, the light red area was areas that was awarded to Cherry Capital. But if you look, you see all of that gray, those are still parcels of, those are addresses, somewhere around five thousand across the entire county, that still had no access to service. And that's been the focus of the work of the LIFT committee, the work that we've been doing, and trying to find the solutions that, to get this problem solved, get all these gaps filled. In September of twenty twenty-one, we presented this study to the Board of Commissioners. And later in that year, we started to do a high-level planning exercise, coming up with a couple different levels that we wanted to get to, we wanted to achieve. I, during that time, twenty one, twenty one, and into twenty twenty-two, we had an opportunity to review proposals from different I S Ps. And by June of twenty twenty-two, the Board of Commissioners approved an agreement with Point Broadband to provide fiber optic services to seven townships, approximately thirty-one hundred of those unserved homes. And that's what brings us to today. We had a kickoff meeting in June, later after the Board of Commissioners approved it. We had the contract signed, and we had a kickoff meeting there in the county building with a lot of stakeholders, which included the utilities, Cherry Land Electric, Consumers Energy, the Road Commission, all of the people that had a, an interest, it would be, would have some role to play in this project. And it was a very good kickoff, it got things rolling really well, it created a good communication network for people to start working on this. So at this point, I want to turn this over to Dan Sullivan, who is the general manager for the State of Michigan for Point Broadband, and he has his colleague, David Ficken, who is the vice president. I don't know his full title, but he's based down in Alabama, but has been a champion in getting this whole thing started. So I want to give it to Dan and have him take it from here.
Thank you, Chris. And then first and foremost, happy new year to all the folks in Lelandal. We're really excited about this project. And for those new commissioners, just a quick, one-minute summary of Point Broadband. We're an organization based, I'm actually in Opelika, Alabama, right now, operating out of soon-to-be nine states, and Michigan being our second largest investment, predominantly just building fiber networks and predominantly focused in rural areas. And in Michigan, we're, we're based out of Stanton, which is kind of mid, if you're not familiar, mid, mid Michigan. And we've made a couple of recent acquisitions over in Fremont, and then another one over in Rose City as well. So we're rapidly expanding our Michigan footprint, and again, really excited to be working alongside the folks in Lelandal and bringing some high-quality broadband services. So as Chris explained, we, we had several meetings and kickoff meetings mid-late summer, and immediately went to work. Our goal was to get shovels in the ground by the end of the year, but before you do that, there's a lot of pre, pre-engineering work that needs to be done. So a quick update on some of the work that was done late third quarter and through the fourth quarter. One of the things we do is we immediately hit the street with engineers, walking out the, all of the grounds, making sure we understand, you know, from a, from a cherry land pole perspective, from an underground boring perspective, what, you know, what everything's looks like, so we can account for it, make sure we have all the right permits, information in place. So we've completed that for the entire project. Basically, we walked a total of four hundred and sixty-two miles, two hundred and forty-three of it will be aerial, using a relationship with Cherryland Capital, Cherryland Electric Co., I'm sorry, who's been a fantastic partner of ours as well, and very, they're very excited about participating on this. One of the things throughout, one of the results of this walkout is we, you could see for those that were involved earlier on, is an increase of about four hundred homes since our initial desktop design. So that's fantastic. And we were able to understand, you know, even further detail about how many homes or businesses passed. In the process right now of, you know, poll engineering, we've completed that in, in December, and this total of fifty-four hundred, just under fifty-four hundred total Cherryland polls. And along with that, then becomes the application, formal kind of paperwork exchange and approvals from, from Cherryland. We've committed, we've submitted thus far thirty-two hundred and sixty-six application. We've gotten three hundred and fifty initially approved, they're working every day on this, and as we start exiting the, the winter, we expect to be ready to be able to, to immediately start working from an aerial standpoint as well. Alongside that, again, roughly half, a little bit, a little bit less than half is going to be underground, so there's specific permitting, either with the Road Commission, specific townships or the county that we'll be executing on. And we've submitted nineteen miles of that to date. We've got fourteen to sixteen total cabinets planned, it's still a design work in progress based on all this information that we continue to process. We've got our initial cabinets designs complete. One of the things that we've, we had to shift early on is we wanted to start, as best we could, somewhere in the northern area of Sutton's Bay, so we can immediately start serving the unserved, but we, there were some details that we needed to work out with third parties that didn't come to fruition. So that forced us to start a little bit south, where we can build a little bit quicker and, and start on the southernmost areas, and then start working our way north. So that's something that unfortunately, you know, a part of a construction process and agreeing with multiple parties just didn't work out. So Chris, if you want to move to the next slide? Yes?
Dan, could you explain what a cabinet is? That might be something that.
Sure.
Maybe I can see some puzzled faces here.
Yeah, absolutely. So a cabinet, you know, from a physical appearance, it looks like a refrigerator. And basically, we'll, we'll run fiber to a cabinet that'll feed that cabinet, and then inside that cabinet will have multiple electronic switches, for the most part. And each one of those switch would have anywhere between twenty-four or forty-eight ports, each one of those would represent, represent a reserve for a specific household. And then we would run distribution fiber throughout that general area. So basically, it serves an area of approximately five hundred households within, you know, two, three, five square miles, depending upon the density of that area.
Hey, Dan, this is Dave. Just real quick to everybody that may be following this, and may be coming in late, this project will bring a fiber connection to every resident and business on the network. So all of that fiber that comes into your home or business is dedicated to you, comes back to a cabinet that serves the general area, and that cabinet is sitting on a network, which eventually gets you out and off to the internet or wherever you need to go. So just thinking about it from a topology perspective, you have a computer, a device or something in your home that's connected to something on the side of your house, that has a piece of fiber connected to it, it goes back to one of these cabinets. And so we've, and you'll see this in just a second, we've segmented the entire county into fourteen, fifteen, sixteen different areas, all of which have their own cabinet, all of which will be on a network that gets you in and out of the world. Does that make sense?
Thank, thank you for explaining that, David. Um, so again, we're all anxiously waiting, we've got our, our construction contractors lined up. From an operational standpoint, we're, we're ready to, to execute. So it comes down to, you know, what can we expect in terms of actually breaking ground and getting this thing built? And, and so, you know, we're going to start as, as quickly as we can in cabinet nine, and you'll see in an upcoming slide down on the southern point. What that does is it allows us to tie in at two different areas, so that now that connects us to the outside world, and, and we're doing, you know, ten gig, hundred gig connections to be able to manage, you know, what we hope will be a significant amount of traffic in and out of the Lelandal County area as well. So that that will start with construction there. And then what we are planning on, again, it's construction, things may shift a little bit. But our plan is to get this done as suggested in two thousand twenty three. Once we get going, we will move quickly. And you'll see a schedule where, you know, starting south and moving north. Cabinets nine, four, eight, seven, and five in Q two, looking to do in Q three, six, ten, thirteen, fifteen, fourteen, and sixteen. And then finishing out the year with twelve, eleven, one, two, and three. So again, we'll have a significant amount of crews working on this to be able to keep pace with, which is a little bit of aggressive schedule, but one that we can keep up with as well. Any questions on, and I think it'll be a little bit more clear as we get to the map and showing where all the cabinets are.
Chris, go ahead and flip to the map.
Before, yeah, we can go back on that one. Yeah, no, that's fine. So you can see down low Cabinet Nine near Traverse City. That's where we'll start. And again, moving our way north. And that just unfortunately, we wanted to start in the the ten, fourteen, fifteen, thirteen, but to get there, we couldn't get to an agreement with a middle mile provider. So we got to build it, which is fine. It's actually what we prefer because we'd rather rely on ourselves anyways. So again, very aggressively building. And, you know, you'll see white cabinet locations. We've already got eleven of the sixteen approved by the county. We've still got some more that we finishing the design that may drop one or two. But that'll be worked, that'll be done concurrently as we're starting our builds on the southern portion. If we want to go back one, Chris, I can just give an operations activity. So concurrently with the engineering that we're doing right now, you know, we want to make sure we have our people on the street managing customer expectations. So we've done a search, we've identified a an operations manager that'll be Leland based. He lives there, very knowledgeable in the industry, and we think it's a great asset for us to bring on board. And he'll be there, you know, as we start this construction. So, you know, construction can be a little bit disruptive. And, you know, as homeowners have concerns, we'll have somebody there to be able to address those concerns and make sure we're taking care of anything that that needs to be taken care of in a timely fashion. We've posted for technician position, so we'll have our own folks there as well. We will use some contractors from an installation standpoint, just to be able to keep up what we expect to be a great, high volume and great take rate. But we'll want to have our own technicians there for anything that becomes a concern, anything that breaks and fixes and things like that. So we've posted initially for two. And we'll grow that as needed. And again, I mentioned we'll have installation contracts that'll focus exclusively on the installation process. And then we're actively looking for some retail and operation space. Ideally, it would be a place that we can, that would serve both needs. Somewhere in the middle so that if if a customer wants to be able to stop in, ask questions. We're in a location that's not too far north, not too far south, somewhere in the middle. So that that search is ongoing in Alabama, discussion budget. It's in the budget to be able to hopefully set up a shop there from a retail and an operations perspective as well. I think that's my, I think that was my last one, Chris, correct?
That is your last one. Are there any additional questions about the map or about anything that Dan has just mentioned?
I wonder if you could point with with some indicator and point out the cabinet positions. We've seen the timeline. But but we can't read the cabinet numbers if we're in the audience.
Can you see this? Ty?
Doug is going to help you there.
I think this will help. So Cabinet Nine is down here. And the first quarter basically is nine, four, I can't read the numbers, but up this way. So it comes up the west side of the lake, from the south, from the south end of the county to the west side of the lake in the first quarter. And I don't know if you want to give me the other quarters, but I think this is probably the most critical element is to say, where are we starting? And that's where it is.
Thank you. This this map and all this report is going to be online for the county website. And so anybody in the audience that needs a closer view could go on our website and look at that. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. Yes.
We're going to show that here in just a minute or so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dave. Standby. We expect there will be a few more questions before we wrap this up. So hang on, let's see what's next. At this point, we want to talk about the community outreach and information. The messaging, what we're doing to make sure that everybody knows what's going on. And I'm going to turn this over to Patricia now, who's on our side of the table for this meeting. Been kind of nice working with her on both sides.
I apologize for turning my back, but I know the microphones are this way. So please bear with me. Hopefully, if you can't hear me, which I know I have one of those voices that just goes past the first row. Please ask questions at the end. Basically, LPEF, Lelandup Peninsula Economic Foundation, is really pleased to continue partnering with the county through our Leland Internet Futures team or Lift. And I would just want to acknowledge our LPEF President Jim Vardenhagen is in the audience. Wave your little hand. Okay. Jim serves as our president, and I have the privilege of serving as Chair for LPEF and Chair of Lift as well. Before I jump into this, I also just want to take this moment to acknowledge. This has been five and a half years of work leading to this particular point that has involved a huge amount of people. I want to recognize all of our Lift Committee, which is large. They're not here today. The messaging committee that is putting together this particular portion of the presentation. Doug Woodley is here with us. David Edelstein is on it as well. Paul Winston. Ty Wessel serves on it as well. And I'm missing someone.
Chris.
Chris. Well, Chris, that's an obvious. Chris Scher is also spending his time working with that. But I also want to say that we were making great progress, and then we discovered Chris. And Chris really brought it all together. But it was with the help with many commissioners as well. Melinda Lotner played a significant role, as does Gwen Alguire. And Ty Wessel has been with Lift from the very beginning. And Deb Rushton, we appreciate you as the new county administrator, but I want to acknowledge everything that Chet has done. Because I have to say, we wouldn't be here with this project if we hadn't had the support of Chet Janik and all the many things. Oh, did I call you a commissioner? Being on this side is new for me. My apologies, county administrator. Okay, well, let's get into the thing you really want to know about. How are we going to keep you all updated? And we did send out on last Friday a press release and also an email that went out to community leaders, it went out to organizations, it went out to governmental entities. And it just said, here's what we're going to be doing to keep people informed. If you want to be kept on this distribution list, please let us know. And, excuse me. Press releases will go out as key information comes available. We're thinking of keeping our outreach emails about once a month, just to let you know what's going pace. But you can also look at the Facebook pages. Lift has one. And also, the county has a Facebook page as well. And the the addresses for both are right there. And of course, as Ty said, they will be on the PowerPoint that the county has afterwards, if you want, you want to see it there. We also, as the fiber is being laid. And when the Point Broadband is getting ready to be in a particular neighborhood, they're going to send out their own communication. So that everybody will know, fiber is laid, we're in your area. If you want to contact us and have information about service, you know, here's the information, here's where you contact. So that's another way you'll be able to be kept aware of what's going on. Then additionally, the county is in the process of creating a new website, which will be really exciting and have additional information about several months down the road. But in the meantime, if you want to see, if you are on the Point Broadband service area, then what you can do. Oh, Chris is just giving us, thank you, Chris. Go back to what you had, huh? Back one, Chris, go back to the email.
Oops, sorry.
It's okay. If you want to be placed on the update distribution list, then just send an email to broadbandproject@lelandal.com. And give us your address and your permission to put you on the distribution list, and we'll be more than happy to do that. The final way that you can keep yourself updated is to utilize the map that is on the county. And Chris is going to help us step through a demonstration of how that works. What you're seeing there is is the address, if you want to use it yourself. And again, it's in the PowerPoint.
Okay, can everybody see the map? Okay? All right, the map is really straightforward. It doesn't have a lot of complicated information on it. You can go to it. And you can just type in your address, as long as you're within Leland County. And I'll just use one as an example. As you type it in, it is based on a national database, so it should self populate based on where you're located. You can even, I think there's a it's covered up on my screen right now, but I think there's a way you can actually use the Find Me button, but just type it in your address. You should see it pop up. And it will zoom right straight into your parcel. This was fifty nine oh three, so I found this place here on French Road. And if you click on the parcel, you will get a pop up. And it is partially covered up by my screen. I apologize that. But you can see, let's see, there we go. Very simple, we've got when we expect the area to be serviced. Right now, all of the parcels still say twelve thirty one twenty three because we will we are planning on having the entire county completed by the end of this year. However, as I continue to work with Point Broadband, we're going to start updating these dates right here, based on the cabinet schedule that you saw a few minutes ago and their construction schedule. So you'll have a much better idea. You'll actually be able to track progress. And then we will also highlight the areas as they get completed and change how they're designated. Right now, all of the unserved areas that are going to be receiving or getting access to the service will have this orange colored hatch. Probably looks kind of like a brown in your screen, but you go and find your address, click on it. You'll have access to a service that goes up to two gigabits per second. And we've also got a link, a handy link right here in the pop up that can take you right straight to Point Broadband's website. And again, enter your address and you can start your communication directly with Point for services. This is all subject to change, but when working with Point, we will make sure that it's kept up to date as best as we can.
Chris, why don't you add an explanation about if you are not in, if if your home is not in the point area, but you want to see who is there. If you click on this map with your address, it will come up and show you that it is Cherry Cherry Communications, if it's Spectrum, if it's one eighty six. So all of that information is on there in addition to the point.
Here's an example here, what she's talking about. You go into this Gills Pier area. This is all highlighted red. This indicates that it's serviced by Cherry Capital Connection. Mentioned it was hard to see on the other map, but you can see the purple area where Christmas Cove is serviced by one eighty six networks. And it shows, it has the legend here that shows you what each of these colors mean. We also show all the charter service area. And again, as we progress, we will change this map. All the served areas by Point Broadband, as they get turned on, will change to a solid orange color. So you'll be able to kind of track the progress as they head north across the county. And get these, all of these areas lit up. Just as a little side piece of knowledge, there are some areas as well that are being built under the ARDOF program I mentioned toward the beginning. That's this red color hatch where Cherry Capital is building. And then over here on the western side of the county, we have a blue hatch color that shows all the area where Charter is building. So we're trying to track all of the activity and working with each of the ISPs to keep this information updated as they go along. And back to you, Patricia.
Sure. So if an area is covered by Cherry Capital, Point will not go into those boundaries. Is that? That's what it sounds like. Or would someone, I've had people in the Cherry Capital area ask if they could have point.
Well, that's a question I'm going to leave to David Ficken.
David had to drop off. Dan?
So at right now, our plan, you know, again, we're starting with a plan. We would not be going there. But typically, once we build, we'll look to expand. So if I had to give you a direct answer right now, no, it's not in our plans. But doesn't mean it won't be in our plans next year.
It becomes a matter of consumer demand. We did, we were asked this question a couple of months ago. Because the, some of the engineering people were seeing in some of these areas where Cherry Capital and Charter were existing. And as part of just a sound design practice. Point Broadband has designed their network to be able to service the entire county. Doesn't mean that they build it at this point, and it doesn't mean that they ever actually build every area, as long as it's provided by somebody. But if the consumer demand starts to dictate that it needs to have some additional services, then Point Broadband will visit at that time and determine whether or not it needs to be built. Does that
Thank you, Chris.
Clarify that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Can you go to the next slide, Chris? We, part of what the communication plan did when we were looking at our broadband plan in total, was to come up with some long and some short term goals. The short term goal was how do we enhance fixed wireless that is high speed? That would allow people to have a really competent quality service that wasn't fiber. The long term plan was to obtain fiber. Now, little did we know that we were going to be able to solve both at the same time. So Chris, why don't you introduce what we're looking at?
Yeah, the the short term plan, because we knew we should be able to execute it much quicker than building a fiber network across the entire county, was to look at the newer fixed wireless technologies. And the one that we did start to work with was Agri Valley out of the thumb area. And they've been working on installing. It's a newer fixed wireless technology. It's similar to five G, but it's not. It's designed for data networking. And today, they have, they are live on the central tower, which is kind of in the center of the screen there. If you look at this screen, this is a computer generated heat map of about how well it will perform. Is there it's expected to perform. We are, we've talked with Agri Valley, and they they will provide an update to this map once they have they will provide an update to this map once they have all three of their tower sites up and running and actually can validate the the coverage areas and the expected data rates and signal levels that they can actually get. But just as a general rule, you can see that central area, anything in the orange and yellow is expected to get really good service. The greens and heading down into the blues, it starts to fade down a little bit. It will be subject to environmental issues, you know, uncertain days, the weather may affect it. But so far, from what I understand, they do have some customers online now, and the performance has been very, very good. And that, like I say, it was, it was intended to be kind of a short term. But I think a lot of consumers will find this technology is more than adequate for how they use the Internet, especially if they're in the 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 higher service level areas. And like Point Broadband, Agri Valley also has their website set up so that you just type in your address. And I think, Patricia, we used yours before. Do you want to use yours again, or we want to type in a different one?
Sure. It's it's one eighty seven. South Highland Drive. Four nine six five three.
Yeah, and like the the county website, it self populates. So as you type it in the address, it should show up. It's got the zip code, and then you want to put in for a residential service. Click go. It'll bring up a map, a Google map showing where the pinpoint is.
All those trees.
There's really a house there. I've driven by it. I've seen it. And then hit next. It's a little slow here. For some reason, it's populating all my information.
It's showing, it's showing.
My computer, but this would be how you get started with Agri Valley as well. And just follow the steps and they will work with you on getting service set up, if that's what's going to work for you. So.
And I will add, they do have two other sites, two other towers. They're they're on the county towers. This was an earlier recommendation that was made to the to the Board of Commissioners that the Board of Commissioners found useful and they approved. And there are a couple of ISPs that took advantage of that. Cherry Capital Connection did. Agri Valley did, and Elevate Net. And of the two, Elevate Net and Cherry Capital Connection are the two that are still on the county towers. Agri Valley, in addition to being on the central power in the middle, will be on the Omena Tower, which is that northern red spot you're seeing. And then down in Maple City, and that's the one in the southern portion. They have all of their equipment at the sites already. Unfortunately, they couldn't access fiber for, as they were able to at the central tower. They had some of the same issues that Point Broadband ran into. So they are, they have found another way. They're going to use microwave, and they had to wait to get the new equipment. It's finally available, and the company is going to be installing it on those towers soon. So you should, if you have any interest, as as Chris says, just contact them. If you have interest in Cherry Capital Connection, contact them. We want to make sure that you have options available to you. Point Broadband will be completing theirs in twenty twenty three. There's its fiber, not not fixed wireless, so it's a different system altogether. And I think the lovely part of this project is is you will have excellent quality, high speed in twenty twenty three. And to, Chris, can you go to the next slide?
Can I, can I interrupt here and say that the questions would be from board members? If the audience has questions, you could write that email broadbandproject@leland.gov, and we would answer your questions. Again, that's broadbandproject@leland.gov. But these questions will be from from commissioners. And I might say that we're lucky enough to have Chet Janet here, who is on contract with Michigan Leadership Academy, and for one of the projects that the board approved that contract on, it was an assist with the funding. So if we have funding questions, we could direct them to Mr. Janet? Or any questions to Patricia or Chris?
And before we begin with questions, Chris, do you want to say just a word or two about the southwestern townships?
Yeah, well, I figured somebody would ask that question. We we have, we still have some areas in for the townships and the western side of the county that are not definitely in anybody's plans yet. Charter Communications has been working over there, building ARDOF, and they have built much further out than what their ARDOF boundaries show on that map. And that's my understanding. When they're complete, they will be serving over nine hundred homes through their ARDOF program. There, what you saw in the boundaries I showed on the map a few minutes ago only added up to about five hundred. So they've gone well beyond those boundaries. Some of it because they were, they were already going down the road. ARDOF was kind of a strange program in that the boundaries were not very well defined. And so I, just through the course of getting to the areas that they were obligated to, they were picking up new areas. So we're in the process right now of identifying exactly what they do have covered, finding out what's left. And there are a couple of programs coming out. One that was just launched in the state of Michigan for funding. And we're looking at ways that we can use that possibly to make sure that we get the rest of it, one way or another. We just haven't figured out the details yet of who the provider is going to be. We have been in talks with Charter about them being that provider, but we have other options too that we're still exploring. And as soon as we have better details, we'll be presenting it to the Board of Commissioners for their approval and action.
Thank you, Chris. Chris, can you kill the PowerPoint so we can see you?
So any, any sense of when Spectrum might?
Don't know yet. As as Chris indicated, a lot of new things have just come about. So it's going to take a little bit before people have an understanding of how it all fits together. But it's exciting. It's exciting that what we were hoping would come to pass is.
Yeah, I didn't catch that question, Patricia.
Gwen was just asking on timeline. This is Chris Shear for everybody. And Dan Sullivan is in in the window on the opposite side, and David Ficken dropped off. So.
Yeah, he's a busy guy. Yeah, Gwen, the I, we're we're still talking with Charter. And we haven't gotten anything definitive from them yet, but the big event that just happened was that the Robin Grant Program has just opened up. It was opened up on Friday, this last Friday. And that has created a couple of opportunities that we have to explore. But we'll be in contact very soon. I talked with Charter earlier today about that. And we're just waiting for them to make some determinations on what they're doing with that, as well as talking with a couple of others that may be a possibility, but I don't want to speak out of school here because they're there. But I've got a lot of confidence. We're going to have a very definite plan within a few weeks.
They are small.
It's your government in action.
Questions, Patricia, Patricia or Dan?
I have just one quick question. When they, when, if you go to the broadbandproject@leland.gov and put in your address, can you just do a house number and street name? Or do you have to put your city or zip code? And the reason I'm asking is that I've had a few people call me who they they look at the map and and it looks like Point is covering that area, but if they put their house number in, it's not showing up. So do you have to do the entirety? What is it looking for?
The, you should be able to just start typing the address, and it should self populate. If you have to actually type out the entire address, then it's going to have to be very accurate to be able to find it. There has been a few, not many, but I mean, there has been a few addresses. The database that we use is based on the county GIS records. And the address database, I believe, is based on the Google database. So there are a few conflicts in there. If anybody's ever experienced trying to use Google to find an address, sometimes it sends them astray. So if you do run into that, send us an email at the address. I'll look into it. I'll work with the GIS people there to look into it and find out just why it's not showing up. But if if you know you're in the right area and you see Point Broadband is planning on building there, you can be assured that you will have access to the service, even though your exact address may not be showing up for some technical reason.
Any other questions for Chris or Chris or Dan?
The funding aspect of it, will there be an update or?
Chip, could you come forward and and respond to the question about funding that we talked about?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Yes, I'm Chet Janet from Elmwood Township, and formerly from Cedar, Southern Township. Yes, yes. And I believe you are Mrs. Lauter. I think we met before. Good evening. So let's talk about funding, because I know many of you are new, and it's your first time here, and this can be overwhelming, because this is over seventeen million dollar project, which is a lot of money. So let me give you a brief background. When COVID hit, the federal government approved funding at different levels. The first was a grant that we received in twenty twenty that we had to apply for. That was a community block grant. It was about three hundred and fifty thousand that we allocated, worked with our townships and our villages. Although that went to local fire departments, we bought the polygam, the poly cam system for that. We bought some equipment for Leland Township for Leland Fire Department, Sunsbay Fire Department. That money was distributed. That was a grant program. The money came through Leland County, but then we had authority authorized it for other units of government. The ARPO funding that came in twenty twenty one was not a grant. It was a direct allocation. We received four point two million from that. That has to be spent by December of twenty twenty. It has to be allocated by December of twenty twenty four. Has to be spent by December of twenty twenty six. Leland County was one of the first counties that went public with the process. We put ads in the paper, we sent a press release. We had about a hundred and thirty five people that responded back. About eighty percent of that was broadband related, broadband internet cell coverage, huge demand. The board had special meetings from September through December of that year, looking at various options. We received, I think, twenty nine proposals from units of governments, from nonprofits, how to proceed. But the feedback from the public was overwhelmingly in favor of broadband fiber cell coverage. That was by far the big issue. We were the first county, and at least from Clare up, to allocate ARPO funds. Had a series of special meetings, as Patricia mentioned, this was a hot priority. We looked at different options. Points came with a proposal for seventeen point two million, of which the county allocated five million, which three point two came from the ARPO funds. So there still is a gap of one point eight million for that project. Now, there still is ARPO funds available from the original four point two. We did allocate some other projects, but I'm guessing, I don't have the math here, because I haven't checked. I'm guessing there still is six hundred to eight hundred thousand in the ARPO fundings from the original grant. Now, this is the key point. The state of Michigan, to this day, has between five and eight billion. That's billion dollars in ARPO funding that has been allocated. It's not a question that's going to happen. It's in the state coffers. The state has the same guidelines. They have to allocate that fund by December of twenty twenty four. For the past year, we've been working with our state representatives and senators. The money has to be allocated. It cannot, it's not part of the state budget. It has to be allocated. So the question is, when will state do that? With many discussions last year when our state rep, our state senator, and with the Michigan Association of Counties, and everyone's saying there probably will be another round of fundings in twenty twenty three. We're hoping it would occur in twenty twenty two, but being a campaign year, they wanted to wait to see what happened in November before they allocate any funds. There's a couple of different options that could happen. One is a second round of funding that the counties could receive the same amount they got the first time. In a second round of funding, there's enough money to double the amount that every county received in the state of Michigan and still have a surplus. The other option is, there's been talk in Lansing, especially with the last group of members of House and Senate, I think it'll continue for this group, broadband projects. That's an issue statewide. Everyone's talking about broadband projects. There's talk about allocating X billion dollars for units of government that they can apply for for broadband funding. If that happens, Leland County could apply within a short amount of time. If you look at this, there are very few counties that have done what Leland has done. So there could be other funding. There also could be a grant process. The state may allocate X dollars for special projects, and broadband seems to be one of those that has a lot of support. It's a non political issue, whether you're at the UP, the southern part of Michigan. It's a big issue everywhere. So like I said, the money is there. The state has to allocate it. It's not part of the state budget. It's a special fund. So I'm confident sometimes in twenty twenty three, there'll be more allocations of funding. Now, there's a lot of new members in the House and Senate, and I'm sure they want time, just like new commissioners, they want time to look at options. But I'm guessing, from what I've been hearing, is the spring, there'll be another round of funding or some process. They have to allocate that money, just as you have to spend the money by December twenty four. They have to allocate that money by December twenty four. And I think many of them want to do it sooner versus later. So I'm optimistic in twenty twenty three, there'll be another round of funding. So as of right now, you have, well, six to eight hundred thousand sitting in the ARPO funds that have not been allocated from the first round. So that's still there. In April, before the board voted seven zero to approve the contract with points, obviously, funding is a big issue. Commissioner asking, where are we going to get the one point eight? And so I worked with the county treasurer. And I believe in April, I came up with some options. We came up with some options. One is the general fund. We do, we are fortunate that we do have the resources. We could come general fund. It could be a combination, the general fund and DTR was the tax delinquent fund. There are funds available there. Now, there's other projects that you will have to look at, the HBC project too, but the funds are there. Mr. Gallagher pointed out that we are in very good shape financially. We could easily apply for a short term loan at low interest rates to fund the projects. Also, when the jail was built, the county applied and received bond money for that. Those bond payments expire in three years. That is approximately seven hundred thousand per year that the county will not be paying in three years. So even if there was a short term loan, there could be money from the bond fund in twenty twenty six or twenty twenty seven. I believe twenty twenty six is the last payment. And Michelle will know. I think it's seven hundred thousand dollars per year, about that amount. Anyway, it's it's close. So you do have options. The goal from the beginning is try not to use local tax dollars. And like I said, there's five to eight billion dollars in Lansing coming from the federal government that's there. The state just has to allocate it. So we've been in dialogue with our current state reps to remind them, our former state reps were very supportive. They all want to do this. It's just the timing and how the process is going to work. They could not compromise last year on how they're going to allocate the funds. Hopefully, that will happen in twenty twenty three.
And and I will just add to that. They've created a my high office, which is dedicated to broadband at the state level. So you're starting to see some of these projects kick out. You know, Chris mentioned the Robin Project. And I will also say that we would never have speaking of as a former commissioner, and I'm sure Melinda and Ty would agree with me, we would never have a uh, and I'm sure Melinda and Ty would agree with me, we would never have approved a project and a contract of that magnitude if we didn't know we had the money to cover it then. It's just, we would much rather raise the one point eight and use those dollars for other purposes.
And I think the key is, we don't have to pay the five million upfront. They do the work. They provide uh invoice that the work has been completed. They'll come to county and the county will pay that portion of the invoice. So it's not like the county has wrote a check for five million dollars upfront to get the project started. The way the contract was drafted, and it took us several months to get a contract in place, because this is a new concept in the state of Michigan. We set up partnerships and we had to work with our legal counsel, but uh the way it is drafted, once the work is done, they will invoice Leland County for that portion of work and then it'll be paid out. So it's not like you'll get a bill for five million dollars that you have to pay within a certain amount of time.
Thank you. Any other questions? We are, we do have more business to attend to. Uh, if we have questions, we can always call Patricia or we can reach out to. Thank you so much. Dan, Chris, David, Patricia, Chet, Robert for coming.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd like to take a five-minute break and allow those who came just for this presentation to excuse themselves, but you're welcome to stick.
I got up three or four times last call. Just trying to take a, just trying to look at the upper part of that, that way, and I think it was too much.
Please unmute.
I think that remains. We're gonna start our meeting. Well, thank you very much. We are now on our agenda down to the consent agenda. And before we uh get to that, I'd like to read a statement about the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial issues together to be dealt with by one motion without discussion. Any commissioner may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected and will not need a second. So is there anybody that would like to take anything off of the consent agenda as presented? Could I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Okay. We move in second to approve the consent agenda. All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, seven zero. Thank you. We are now down to item number fifteen and Trudy Gala is here. We uh have a planning community development potential approval grant, so come for allocation, come forward, Trudy and Wendy Irvin and Habitat for Humanity. Thank you for being here, Wendy.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I think I heard the word grant in there, which is not a grant.
Hear me say allocation.
Yes, but it's a loan.
I like the word grant.
Yeah. Um, so we're here today to present to you the requests from Habitat for Humanity. Um, and I reviewed it for you at your executive committee. Habitat is trying to buy back a home in the Cedar area. There's two, two separate parcels, two um two opportunities here. One is to get back the home from the property owner through a purchase and also get back the adjoining lot so that an additional home could be built on there for a second family. So corporate council has prepared the mortgage and promissory note. And you had received a copy of that. The clerk has received the originals, if you approve it tonight. And I, I think I'll stop there and see what Wendy would like to add to that as well, and then see if you have any questions.
Well, I, I think this is a great opportunity for us to collaborate. I think we recognize that it takes all of us and uh to just even make a, you know, small dash in the need that exists. So I'm here today hoping that we can collaborate and this will be one step further in that opportunity. So any questions that you have, please let me know. That's why I'm here tonight. And again, I thank you if you go forward with this. It's not a grant. I wish it were a grant. Uh, but a loan will help us go forward and make sure that we can secure uh safe and affordable housing uh with this one location and then divide the property and build the additional home. So that's two additional families that we can serve.
Trudy, you reminded us last week, but re-remind us about why this is a no-risk loan.
Um, the property is, would be purchased by Habitat for Humanity. So basically, what you're doing is loaning them some money so they can fill that gap and get enough to make the purchase. And then um close the deal out and the mortgage goes on the property. So it'll be a first lien on the property. So Habitat will own it and they'll have a first mortgage back to Leland County.
Good. So we are in a first position.
We will be once the purchase is made and this document is recorded. So this would, this would get transitioned over to Habitat for them to use at the closing. So when they close everything out with the title insurance company, this mortgage gets recorded.
And you do have a timeline. You have a six days.
We do have a timeline. We have a rider first refusal with every partner that, and homeowner that we sell our homes to. So that we have an opportunity to, to recycle in the Habitat world. It's recycled home. And yes, when they come to us with that rider first refusal, uh, we do have a sixty-day opportunity between the time of our written request and the board's response and how we're going to achieve that. So if we were not able to pull this together financially and decline it, that means that the homeowner could go out in the market and sell it.
Promotion. We ready for a motion? Motion to approve the mortgage and promissory note drafted by corporate council for a sixty, sixty thousand dollar loan to Habitat, Habitat for Humanity, Grand Travis Region, for a buyback of a home in Cedar and authorized signature by the board chair. Funds to come from Fund Two Seventy-Five Housing.
I move in second. Any questions? Melinda Lautner.
Yeah, so um when do you expect the, what are the terms? Is it just a one shot? As soon as you sell that home, we get the sixty thousand back as all at once? That's how it, the term is written?
Yep, that's the, that's how it's written in the mortgage and the promissory note as well.
Okay, okay. And then um you mentioned that there was a, a lot, that that lot can be split. Is that west of that home presently?
It's, yes, it's actually not split. The, if, there's two different parcel numbers there already.
Okay.
So the, the person who owns the home owns the other lot. So it would be just selling, selling the home with the lot, selling the other lot once it's built on to someone else.
Okay, okay. But it is west of that house. It's, is the?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Trudy or Wendy? If you have a motion, uh, all those in support of the motion, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say. Approve seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now are at uh the um local assistance uh allocation distribution that uh Administrator Alan talked to us about last week. Uh, that's now on the agenda. Would you introduce that to us again?
So last week, we brought before you the concept of the, that the Leland County qualifies for the fifty thousand dollar funding for two years. So it actually is fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three, for a total of a hundred thousand dollars. And this is um actually an allocation that would be from the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund um under the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, due to the fact that Leland is a revenue-sharing county and receives bill or payment in lieu of tax funding. So this is something that is already registered. It's already been allocated um to Michigan counties based on their um applicability with the uh funding. And uh this really just requires an application. And so that application, which is what we had discussed at the meeting last Tuesday, um is actually in the process. So um just, the next step would be is to um have the board have to make a determination on how those funds will be allocated.
Any questions?
So this motion is just to proceed with the application.
It, it is, and it's one of those things that I suppose we should talk about at some point is, you know, what level would the board want me to bring these things back to? It's not a grant. It's, it's an allocation very similar to ARPA. Um, but the application process was initiated.
I had suggested to Jeff that in February, we'll revisit that, because obviously, the of this money coming to us, all it takes is an application. We want her to do it. It's those things that commit us to some extra funding that we want to approve, I think, but we'll have that on the February agenda.
Commissioner, Commissioner Lautner was just asking if there was a motion, but this, there was no motion because it's, it's already been, has it been applied for?
The application was submitted today.
So then that will come back to us for approval of that grant or for to, to for receiving, German the allocation.
Well, we will have to approve that grant at that time to, to receive those dollars and then allocate them.
Correct? Yeah, right. They're used to having when money is already received, they'll come in accepting and then determine the allocation.
Okay.
So there is, there is no motion necessary.
Okay.
We uh, we have now, uh, we took the collective bargaining up, up the agenda, because uh we'll get that later. So we're done at the agenda where we review the financials.
At number seventeen?
We have, we, we have number eighteen.
Seventeen.
Oh, and seventeen. I'm brushing ahead. I'm sorry. We have uh Leanna's uh proposal that came to us on Tuesday. We uh, we tabled that or moved it forward, but didn't take action on it. So it's uh action item number seventeen on information technology.
And Leanna is actually um with us.
I'm here.
Hey, Leanna.
Hello.
Want to, uh, want to introduce this?
Um, I've updated the um EDS that I had written up for the phone system upgrade. Um, the quote was correct. My uh paperwork for it was not, so I apologize for that. Um, the actual phone system upgrade will cost twenty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. Um, for a fourteen-year-old forces phone system, I would say that's pretty good. So that will get us up to the latest standards. And then I've also um requested funds, eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars to purchase some new desk phones, twenty of them at this time, that are four hundred and eleven dollars apiece. Currently, our phones are fourteen years old. They are discontinued. I can't get anymore. And I have one used workable spare. So I think we should probably consider getting some more.
Thank you.
I move that the county board of commissioners waive its bid policy and approve the quote from VSB Communications in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand, four hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-one cents to upgrade our phone system and purchase twenty new desktop phones with funds to come from telephone fund six five six.
Second.
Yes, I move in second. Any, any uh discussion or questions for Leanna? This is in. Commissioner Lautner and then.
So um was this really the only, what, why didn't we go up a bit on the phone's release, like the only phone that would fit within what we have now and fit our system?
For the desktop phone, do you mean?
Yes.
This is what the vendor recommended?
Okay, were there no other? Have gone out beyond that and looked for a difference?
I have not done that. I can, if you, if you would like me to do so.
Well, I just, I was just wondering if, if for some reason, you only looked at this one.
Just because that's what the vendor recommended. I, they know their system the best, so I, I went with that.
And this is the system we currently have. It's an upgrade, basically.
Yes, yes, it is.
Commissioner, I recall.
Okay, I think that answers the question more. I mean, this, this is an expansion and upgrade to our existing system, so bring another vendor in would be probably a mess or not financially feasible.
I would have, I would have assumed that another vendor would want to replace the entire system with their own, instead of just upgrading what we currently have.
And it's previously the budget already, correct? This is, that's right. This has been budgeted at forty thousand and, the whole of it is thirty thousand and forty-six.
Okay, all the vote. Any other questions? All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passed with seven zero. We uh now are down to the uh late edition request number one, copier replacement building safety. You want to introduce that?
Certainly. So in front of you, you had um what was originally uh indicated is late edition number one. Um, so just put an A behind that and now it's late edition number eighteen. So um, this is in reality just a co- a copy machine that had been utilized by building and safety. They had purchased their own copier in the past. Um, and we discussed that this made more sense to put this under the county's overarching um agreement, which we had done previously for building and safety. So this is, there's a precedent that we've already done that in the past. And so um this again would be um And so, um, this again would be, um, a cost allocation, which you've heard the discussion about previously, that they will be charged for the expenses that are incurred, um, for this piece of the book.
I just wanted to comment on the statement that what you have right now has been diagnosed as terminal. I think that's relevant information.
Looking, looking for a motion?
I move that right ahead, big kid. Okay. I move that the County Board of Commissioners waive its bid policy and approve to purchase a refurbished Sharp MX four zero five one copier from Netlink Business Solutions and the amount not to exceed three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars with funds that come from the account six four five nine seven oh. Is it? Am I giving that right? Sorry. Uh, point zero one zero.
Support. And move to second. Any, any questions? All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say? Motion approved seven zero. And I thank you. Michelle, your training this afternoon was We are now on our agenda, the review of financials.
I had no, I personally had no questions about any of them.
Anybody else? We are now committee reports, uh, recommendations and resolutions, anything? We are now at staff, uh, Commissioner affiliated agencies, any reports?
I'd like to give a, a quick update. Um, you know, we heard earlier a little bit about the benefit of our relationship with the Michigan Leadership Institute and CHET's support. And I just want to give you, uh, an update on several projects, um, things that have been moving forward. So do want to share that the H-Bet project, the engineers and architects have met and have been assigned, um, the, the architects and the engineers that have been assigned have met and had a joint meeting that was held on January sixth. Um, the majority of the piping and ductwork in the building can be retrofitted to the new proposed system, which will lower the cost of the project. And it is also projected that the heating cooling cost will be substantially lower with the new proposed system. The goal is to complete the design phase and the request for proposals documents know later than July and provide the contractors approximately thirty days to submit proposals that will include construction timeline and financial costs associated with the project. More, a more detailed update and timeline will be provided in February. So that's one item that's moving forward. Would also like to update you on the lower level space. Um, a meeting was held between the design team and the director of the Health Department Environmental Health Division to review the original space configuration design, um, from twenty twenty-two and ensure that the same design will be used in developing the documents for the request for proposal this spring. The goal is to complete the design process by March. So more information to come on that. You already talked about the federal funding. In terms of the community mental health, the six county task force met Monday afternoon to continue the process of restructuring the resolution and agreement and bylaws for the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Authority. It's a tedious and lengthy process, but progress, progress is being made with the goal of completing the review in February. Um, you should have received also a copy of the community mental health listening sessions that are scheduled for February ninth. This is in essence to gain insight from the community in terms of what they would like to see, um, from the different counties that are supporting this entity. So, um, that will be happening on February ninth. Encourage you to please attend and let your constituents know about that. And then I also want to share with you about the Leland Township Tower project. Um, the proposed site is located north of the village Northport and Gosling, um, Zubek Inc. is the, um, in the process of determining a schedule to the soil sample borings of the site. And Matt Ansaraj has, um, has completed the documentation to get approval from the Federal Aviation Authority. And I'm pleased to share with you that as of today, excuse me, the FAA has provided their determination following a ten division review of the application that they have cleared their requirements and now end up can complete their review of the tower for a tall structure permit. So things are moving forward with that as well. And lastly, I want to share with you that the information in regards to the opiate lawsuit settlement, uh, Leland County was one of the first counties in Northern Michigan to agree to be part of the special lawsuit against opiate manufacturers in two thousand seventeen. Um, there was a settle agreement in twenty twenty and opiate manufacturers agreed to a national twenty-six billion dollar settlement. Three of the major opioid distributors, McKesson, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen Manufacturers, um, and, um, also Janssen Pharmaceutical Inc. and its parent company, Johnson and Johnson collectively will pay twenty-one billion. The amount that Leland County is scheduled to receive is four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars over an eighteen-year payment period. Uh, the settlement, um, should, there was a lawsuit that had delayed it a little bit, um, that has been, um, thrown out. And so last week the circuit court granted the request for summary disposition and challenges. And at the advice of the federal judge, it's just to be spent, um, to, for prevention, harm reduction and treatment and recovery of our residents. So that allocation should be for companies as well.
Good news. That's like progress through thousands of year.
Thank you for letting me get through that. Sorry.
Lots of good news and lots of hard work. We're now on our agenda. Do you have any questions for Ms. Allen before we move to public comment? We're now at our second public comment section. Uh, at this time, the public has yet to need to speak for up to five minutes. Would ask you to address the board and avoid any disrespect. Thank you very much. If you want to be recognized, please raise your hand. Yes, Bill.
Just again, we all want honest votes. We all want honest elections. And we just, the only way we're going to get them is get rid of the Dominion voting machines and replace them with secure paper ballots. And that would be by one, one person, one ballot, one vote. Just like to go into this little handout again that I passed out the first time. Um, you can find this online. If you go to frankspeech.com, oh, Bill Weisner, Elmo Township, I'm sorry. You can find this at frankspeech.com and go for the news at the top, the link. And there's three choices. And one of them is, uh, return to Hand County, Missouri. And, uh, it's got two items here. It's got a two hundred and fifty-five page PDF file of how all these things they put together, how they used to do with the paper ballots. So it's all laid out. It answers all the questions. It gives a lot of information on why it should happen that way to make the election secure. Um, so I, and as soon as I get this done, uh, this is a transcription. This is part of the transcription of a three-hour program with these four different groups of interview people they interviewed. And if you look in on the page there, there's some people at a table. They're not playing cards there. That's, um, they're doing a sample of how they would count the ballots. So, um, that's what that's all about. And the two people on the right, two or three people on the right of the pictures are the, the leaders in Missouri. One of, the one on the top, she, Linda, she wrote this two hundred and fifty-five page manual, put all this stuff together. So if we could just take a look at Sean Smith again, this Colonel, uh, just a, a few notes from there. He said, um, what he, he is trained in, he was in the service for, I don't know, twenty, thirty years. But what I do know, I know better than anybody who hasn't had the opportunities I've had, is the threat is the threats themselves, the threat itself, particularly from foreign nations. And he gives an ex, an example of the Joint Staff of Department of Defense, which spends somewhere between nine and eleven billion dollars a year on cybersecurity. Well, look what happened. Could not protect, um, their own internal network. The CISA, CISA, CISA Network, Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency. And they couldn't protect their own networks from the solar wind supply chain compromise, which has been in the news. And he, he says he wants to talk specifically about voting systems. He talks about them, most of the, a lot of the machines that are used in the voting. There, all the components are made from other countries. Uh, you know, some of them are enemies, China, different ones. Um, and he says the certification process isn't correct. Uh, they say it's accredited labs under the Election Assistance Commission in the United States. He says, all of these things we've been told are completely false. They're completely sham. And then up on the next column there, he talks about the ERIC system, Electronic Registration Information Center and the Center for Election Integrity. All these organizations have reinforced the centralized, computerized technocracy that is depriving Americans control over our elections and therefore over our country. Uh, it's not our only problem. He says we have other problems with, uh, voter registration, problems with the ballots and ID. But we will never have an election that is either transparent or that we can trust on a computerized or electronic voting system. That's why so many countries in Europe have switched. No, we're not going to use that. That's why Brazil has been on the streets for two months. And finally, uh, what, what, what was left? They were peaceful for so long. And they wouldn't do that. The Indian tribes over there, they were said to have, all of them voted for the communists. Well, they didn't. And they, they spoke up. One of the guys has been in jail forever or for a long time over there. Back on the backside, Dr. Douglas Frank. I, I don't have time to go into it, but it's really good articles there. I have much more in the formatted session that I'll get up on the website now to everybody. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Any commissioner comment?
Yes, it's been kind of a busy first month and I just sort of like drinking water from a fire hose. And I just want to thank all the people, especially there's people in this county that really goes above and beyond even after hours to, you know, I don't think they tell you guys all of it, but they sure have to be. Okay, so I just want to thank them and it's, it's a great place to live.
Thank you, Jim. Other comments from commissioners? Well, I would echo Jim's comment. Thanks to, thanks to everybody that, uh, works and lives in, uh, please, at Leland County. At this time, we're at approval of financials. So Kathy and Jen?
All right. So you had your education before the meeting started. So I have a transfer in front of you. Does anybody want to go over that all the digits are there and, um, all the amounts are good or? Um, all right. So what this is, is the first one of the year, um, we talked about in the education prior. These are the funds that support other funds. So the very first transfer on the page is from the Tower Fund. Um, and I talked a little bit about in the work session that I'm moving ninety-seven five. Um, and sounding like all that great news about a, a tower going in, into Northport, uh, into Leland Township, we will definitely be looking at in the future. So I'm going to pull fifty percent. That leaves us the other ninety-seven five in case we need to construct or help construct a, a tower. Uh, the next ones, there's been a lot of talk about detention, uh, centers and, and, um, juveniles in housing and so forth. So, uh, typically we watch the childcare very closely. And so, uh, we move the next portion down, the next line item one oh one, three, two, five, six, six, two. That's a general fund transfer into the childcare, which, um, the Family Court Administrator Cameron Clark was just, uh, with and talked with you last week. So we're going to move fifty percent this time. Uh, we'll write it out and look to see, um, the next time we probably would touch it is maybe October and see how it's looking. Um, it also uses fund balance. And that is a fund that we have to match the state. So if they say they have, um, a hundred and sixty thousand for detention, we have to match a hundred and sixty thousand. So there's three hundred and twenty thousand in detention and contractual services. Um, so that is a firm amount, but it doesn't mean that our portion always has to be at a hundred percent. So it's one of those where Michelle caught, talked about the roller coaster. We want to leave that nice and level. Um, the next one's down, fund, um, other funds. Uh, we fund the Department of Health and Human Services for fifteen thousand. We fund community corrections. That's a committee that one of you are on for ten thousand three. It's a contract with Grand Travis County. Uh, the nine one one dispatch is funded by the general fund as well as, um, e-wireless. Uh, that's a grant that doesn't, comes in quarterly. So it's not right. It's not yet here in January. Um, so I'm going to pull fifty thousand from, I'm sorry, fifty percent from the general fund and put that into nine one one. And that should get him, uh, that department at least until June into July, if we have to put more into that. And that's mostly salaries and, and software. That's, that's that there. Um, ended in defense is the, is a grant. And so county's portion is fifty-three thousand. The remainder comes from the state. And the last one is the dam. And that is currently, um, facilitated and all done through the general fund to fund your, the dam. And it is special in the sense to what it's actually called the special assessment. And a special assessment is that in the event that there is a large scale expense that you would, um, tax the riparians and or set up a special assessment to tax to get that, that dam fund built up. Right now, we're looking between twenty and twenty. Last year it was twenty-nine thousand, before it was twenty-five. And so it's not enough to set up that. And so we've been bringing it from the general fund.
So we have the ability to do a special assessment?
Yeah, Melinda brought it up last year. Yep. The first time, uh, when I started, it was two thousand and five when I started here. They had just done a special assessment for the dam. And, and that rebuild, that cost, I think it was five hundred thousand, I think is what's on our capital improvement. And then you saw a couple of months ago, he did a, um, cost allocation for insurances as what it's to, what it's worth. So if we had to repair it. Um, that was fifty percent county and fifty percent, uh, of a special assessment.
Commissioner Lotner?
I move to approve fund transfer twenty-three dash zero zero one. Support.
Any discussion or question? All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say? Approve seven zero.
Approve claims and accounts one hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-three cents.
All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved seven zero.
And I will move to approve plus that one million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eighty-one dollars.
All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.